I call the meeting of the planning and zoning regular meeting for Wednesday, March 12th, two thousand twenty-five to order at six thirty-seven. And let their record show that there is a core in present. Public comments. Non-agenda item, public comments. White card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda regular related topics for the length of time not to exceed three minutes. Agenda item, public comments, yellow card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda and agenda items combined for the length of time not to exceed five minutes. Total per person on all items except for public hearing comments on public hearing items must be made. When the items come before the board commission committee and not to exceed two minutes per person. No action or discussion may be taken by the board commission committee during the public comments on non-agenda items. To address the board commission committee, please complete one, complete the white or yellow cards and present it to the city staff designated to the meeting. Commissioners, I'm gonna state for the record that we did see you do have a correspondence email. We did receive that from the city staff.
Chair, just for clarification, that the email from Mr. Batte?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we're moving on. We're gonna public hearing, conduct a public hearing on rezoning application for two lots on twenty-three point eight zero nine acres, more or less, and being located at one, two, five, five, two. I'm sorry. One, two, five, two, two, and one, two, five, two, four. Oak Kimbrough Road, Maynor, Texas, from agriculture to IN dash two heavy industrials. Commissioners, we do have a few. I'm, please forgive me for, I don't wanna mess this up, Ms. Dunbar. D O H O U, I mean, O H U E. Yes, Ms. Donahue, Mr. Donahue. Would you like to speak? Alright, we do have Ms. Angela. You wish the same thing. And Ms. Irene Chung is here for, if we have any questions, is that correct? Alright. Mr. Michael, we have anything?
Pardon me, I was assisting with that. This item is a rezoning immediately following a recent annexation of this property into our corporate city limits. It was and still has contemplated for heavy industrial use. This follows our future land use map. There's, there's been a lot of conversation and planning going into this and zoning is essentially the first step to getting the actual development going.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
I have a question. In the letter of intent, it mentions hazardous and explosive materials. I was wondering if could elaborate more on what types of materials we're talking about.
Please state your name for the record when addressing the commission.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, my name is Irene Joy. I'm a project lead at Build Block. We're currently developing this property and there's not gonna be any manufacturing of the hazardous chemicals. It's just going to be storing up and we're taking care of it, abiding by the law and the code. And we're dealing, we're consulting with the fire and all the hazardous chemical consultants. And everything's being taken care of, there's not gonna be any leaks. We're just storing up the chemicals. We are going through the list of the hazardous materials and we will submit those to the city if, once we have a final list.
So to provide a bit more context for that, they have provided the list of hazardous chemicals and materials on site to our Travis County Emergency Services District for their review and they're going through that with a fine tooth comb and they're working through that currently.
Is that included in our backup? Or has that not been provided to the city of Maynor?
It was sent to us, but that's more on the actual site development side, whereas this is zoning, so even if they can't do it, the zoning would allow them to do the industrial use.
Okay. If we have, we have a speaker who's, who wants to, I, I can't, I don't wanna speak presumptuously, but we have a speaker who probably will speak here in a moment in the public hearing that we're in. And I'm just trying to figure out where zoning from, the request is to recommend rezoning from agricultural, which would not allow explosive, flammable and yeah, flammable or explosive materials on site, but this would allow, IN two would allow the storage of that. So I'm trying to figure out why we don't have that list of chemicals provided to us as we make a decision that could open the door, green light, storage of explosive or flammable chemicals as stated in the backup in the letter of intent. Can you detail what those chemicals are? Thank you.
So we do have a list of the chemicals. If anything, if there's any changes to the list, it's just going to be narrowed down. There's not gonna be any additional hazardous chemicals at all. It might even be that we
Can the list be provided to the commission right now?
Right now, I could look, I can pull it up in a few minutes, but I don't have that in my hand right now.
Cause we're gonna be, this is a reason, this is a public hearing and we're gonna have a business item after this, most likely if the public hearing is closed. So we, we need that to make a proper decision. Thank you.
If I may, it's also worth note, there are heavy stipulation around what can be stored and how it's stored. And if it is not possible to do so in a safe manner with the adjacent property owners, it won't be allowed. And that's not just the city standard, that's a life safety standard also enforced by fire. That's why it's been so long going through the process of getting this approved.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? The map, I'm trying to picture where this is, cause you know, Old Highway Twenty and Kimbrough kinda go on both sides of two ninety. Is this the Shadowland side or is this the like Bell Farms, Carriage Hills side?
The east side.
Let's talk in girl terms, okay? Left or right?
It's on the left side of Kimbrough, do you know where the Maynor Commercial Park is?
It's, it's on the HT Fitness side.
That's a bit far away from this side, but
Yeah, but it's on the same side of two ninety as HT.
It's on the south side of two ninety, yes.
And it's further down, right? Cause I live off Old Highway Twenty, so I'm just trying to
If I could address the board members, this is Scott Jones, Economic Development Director for the city. And the properties that are just adjacent over in the Maynor Commercial Park, they have similar uses that have the same type of chemicals being stored. And Wannick Materials is a Samsung vendor and they are gonna be they're storing cleaning processing chemicals that are gonna be used for the cleaning of the chips that are used by Samsung. So we've been working with them for, you know, over a year now, probably. And they're gonna be doing a forty-six million dollar plant expansion and, and producing, they've, they've got, I've got drawings of what they're gonna build and they're gonna build a lab and a lot of other things. Not just the storage of, of of materials, but a lot of other things that are gonna be developed on that property as well. And they're planning on bringing a couple of other of their, not just materials, but a couple of other of their, their sister companies to that property as well later on.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I have a question. Is this, this is right across from Ergon too, right? Ergon, the concrete, the big, this is right across the street from that.
Yes.
Yeah, I can speak, I, I live near there. We already have issues with air quality over there because of the Ergon and the stuff that they do, the cleaning, like their concrete pavement company. So there's already like a reduced air quality, I would say, over there and there's a smell in the air that, that does exist from Ergon, which I know is outside of city limits, so you guys don't have, but it is already there, right? So I would be hesitant to, to want something more chemicals there, right?
Well, I'll, I'll also remind you all, if you look at the city's comprehensive master plan, the entire area down there, which includes the two hundred and sixty-three acres that Hans Laser Technology bought, that's the, kind of the gray area down here. This entire area down by the railroad tracks and eastward is all planned for employment center, which is gonna be heavy industrial use is the master plan for the city. So all that area down there on Old Kimbrough Road and all that eastward is planned to be industrial area. So that's, that's already in the city's master plan and what, you know, what, what the whole city's planning for. So that, that's kind of
I agree with that.
That's kind of what we planned to do and that was in the city's master plan that was passed two years ago.
It's my understanding that, looking at the zoning maps, that, that that parcel there, that's just north of it in the center of the screen at the top is zones IN one, which is a lower level zoning than IN two. From what I've been reading, that some of the items are hazardous items that are allowed in IN two are not in IN one. So this would be an increase in the type of use.
Uh, one second. So I guess my question now is, is, is the chair. Now that these wonderful community members have heard, can they, are they allowed to speak?
Chair and commission members, Veronica Ribera, Assistant City Attorney, it is at your discretion and since they were called out and they have had, not had an opportunity, you have not closed the public hearing?
Alright, Ms. Ms. Dunbar and Mr. Donahue, I'm allowing you to speak. One, just because when I got on here, I'm all about the community and so I would love to hear what the community has to ask. But if you haven't heard your questions, I would be advised to ask your questions and so that way, you know, the person is here to hear your questions. Uh, Mr. Donahue, you, you can come up and speak. We just need you to state your name. When you, just state your name when you get up there.
It's very hard to understand what you all say.
No.
I live just south of the property that we're talking about here, where it splits off into two, that's me, just below that. And you said there's gonna be hazardous chemicals. I'm at a lower level. If there's gonna be runoff, I need to know about it. Now, I have my place up for sale, once I sell, I could care less what they have over there, but while I'm there, I'm gonna be very concerned as to what kind of chemicals there, I wanna know what, where, when, why, how, especially if it's explosive and carcinogenic. That's my home. So, uh, until they can explain to me, I'm in opposition. I didn't want to be because like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to sell and get the heck out of here. But until I do, or maybe they would like to buy my property, so I can get the heck out of there. But, uh, does anybody have a list of the chemicals they're gonna be using?
So unfortunately, Mr. Donahue, we can't answer any questions. All we can do is listen to your questions and, and hopefully they can answer your question for you.
Okay, I, I, as far as I'm concerned, until I get a, a list of what chemicals they're planning on using and how they're planning on using them, I'm in opposition. Like I say, that's my home. And I don't want anybody invading it. I used a lot of chemicals in the work I used to do too, so I know what's coming down.
Mr. Donahue, could you just state your name for the record?
My name is Brenner Norton Donahue.
Alright, thank you so much, Ms. Donahue.
It's okay.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Angela, would you like to speak? And again, just state your name for us.
My name is Angela Dunbar. I represent the Donahues and also Mr. Darrell Glover. Mr. Darrell, anyway, I represent two properties. So the concern is definitely the chemicals. A, being a veteran, Agent Orange exposed, high concerns of what's gonna take place. We wanna see a list before we can agree because there is a lot of seniors living in that area, so that's a big concern. We haven't seen or heard of any traffic studies taking place, so we can know how that would affect their in and out because it is a small road and it's narrow already with people coming in and out and if there's heavy equipment, a lot of employees, we'd like to know that as well. So at this time, we oppose of that.
Thank you. Commissioners, that's on the public comments for agenda item. Public hearing number one.
Commission, I move we close the public hearing on item one.
I have a motion from Commissioner Stetson, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a commotion, um, motion for Commissioner Leonard. All in favor, raise your hand. Oppose. Moving on, public hearing number two. Conduct a public hearing on a subdivision preliminary plat for Maynor Commons Northeast Commercial being nineteen lots on thirty-one point eight eight nine acres, more or less, and being located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US Highway two ninety and FM nine seventy-three, Maynor, Texas. Mr. Michael?
Yeah, so this is the preliminary plat for the Maynor Commons Northeast Commercial portion. We had a rezoning come through here to correct a discrepancy in the southeastern portion of the lot that was not properly zoned. This is just the beginning steps of subdividing the lots for the different commercial parcels.
Uh, Mike, am I understanding it correctly that none of these planted lots are large enough to require a plaza?
There are certain stipulations around what requires a plaza. There's an acreage requirement as well as a number of structures on it, structures being buildings. I believe the acreage requirement is ten acres. I'd have to look into our code specifically to specify that, but you need to have a minimum four different buildings.
And is that nineteen acres per lot or nineteen acres total? I'm sorry, is that ten acres total or ten acres per lot?
It would be a total of ten acres would necessitate that.
So anything over ten acres period?
Yes, and it wouldn't, well, the codes recommends or encourages a plaza, so it's not like if you have seven, ten acre tracks next to each other, every single one of them would have a plaza. But it does encourage the inclusion of one.
Then why are we not getting those? Cause we don't have a lot of them, maybe some are coming with the HEB, but I would say we don't have a lot of those plazas so far.
As much as I would love to answer that question, it does not pertain to the preliminary plat and I'm sorry, that's not the answer you're looking for.
Commissioners, I, I do have a Mr. Floyd Jackson. This is, he was requesting to speak for a regular agenda item number five, which is this one. Mr. Jackson, you, you have anything?
Hello, my name is Floyd Jackson. And I live on Maxa Drive, right where they're gonna be that intersection come through. Currently, when it rains, it's about a week of water just sitting there. Are they gonna plan any type of runoff or anything like that with that area right there? Cause right where dead ends on Marie Drive, actually. That's that. That sits there. And I was just wondering anything on the planning on that side of things with that street coming through? Or is there anybody here that can talk about it from there?
At this time, Mr. Jackson, we can again answer your questions, but when we do get to the, the business items, we can start asking your questions for you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Also, having been known what type of buildings or developments that's coming there? Do we, anybody know that as of yet?
At this point, Mr. Jackson, we can't answer any questions. All we can do is listen, yes, sir, I'm sorry about that.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, that's, Mr. Jackson was the last one. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing number two?
I move to close the public hearing for agenda number two.
I have a motion by Commissioner Leonard, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Commissioner Myers, all in favor, raise your hand. Oppose. Moving on, all of the following items on consent agenda items are considered to be self-explanatory by the PZ Commission and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless requested by the chair or a commissioner. In which event, the items will be removed from the consent agenda items and consider, consider separately. Consent agenda item. Number three, consider discussion and possible action to approve the minutes for February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five for planning and zoning commission regular session.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson.
A second.
A second by Commissioner Leonard, all in favor, raise your hand. Oppose. Motion passes. Moving on to regular agenda item, consider, consideration and discussion and possible action on rezoning application for two lots on twenty-three point eight zero nine acres, more or less, and being located at one, two, five, two, two and one, two, five, four, two, four. Oak Kimbrough Road, Maynor, Texas, from agriculture to IN dash two heavy industrial staff.
This is the zoning item that we were referencing prior. And pardon me while I pull up my notes from questions that were previously asked. Regarding a TIA being completed, it's based on trips generated. Our threshold is two thousand trips per day. Am I too low or am I too boomy?
Is it, is it better if I pull the mic away from my face?
Yeah, I can hear you better now.
Yes, sir, so pertaining to a TIA, we have a minimum trip threshold of two thousand trips per day. If they have more than two thousand trips a day, a traffic impact analysis is conducted. This is during the time of site plan and they will be required to do whatever traffic improvements deemed necessary by that study. Now, as for drainage and runoff, we follow Austin's Drainage Criteria Manual and they have very strict regulations about what you can have leave your property. In fact, you cannot convey more flow than what is currently existing. So regarding runoff or additional water going on to the neighboring properties, it should not increase based on the criteria set before them. As for the chemical list, that is something that we can provide. I don't know how familiar everyone is with these different chemicals, but I don't know if Irene was able to pull it up or if anything, we can attach it to the minutes after this meeting, so it'll be available for all of the public to review as well as our commissioners. And please remind me if I'm forgetting any other questions that are asked, so I can address them. Were you able to hear me properly, sir?
A little. But like I said, I'm concerned only with my health. I'm in bad shape as it is, I don't need any more chemicals.
Yes, sir.
So is there any chemical that's gonna be leached into the air? Or where these chemicals are gonna go and how they're gonna be used? But like I said, if, if I move, I don't care, but as long as I'm in opposition.
Alright, Mr. Donahue, unfortunately, we cannot allow any more questions from the floor. Um, but I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. I can provide more context for any potential questions that may or may not have been asked. In terms of chemical storage, it's my understanding that it's purely storage, not manufacturing or release and trap. And to that point, our public works director also made a very strong stance that he does not want to treat any water that is full of chemicals because it's very expensive, it takes a lot of water and it's not an endeavor the city wants to pursue. So in terms of being filtered out some other way that's not environmentally or water capacity friendly, that's something we are already working through because we don't want that.
Ms., Ms., Mr. Dunlap, you can't, I'm sorry, you can't speak.
I can get you my card after this meeting so we can communicate outside.
Commissioners, you have anything?
I have a question for Ms. Troy. Were you able to find that chemical list and are you able to at least touch on some of those, the primary? No, Ms. Troy. Please step up.
So Michael should have the list of the chemicals, Beau just sent it to you. So it should be in your email, I'm, I'm not sure how to share with you right now.
You're standing here and I asked you a question, can you please respond to the question I asked?
Didn't you say?
I'm going to be considering a, a recommendation for rezoning and I, I, I am personally on the fence as commissioner to make a recommendation to rezone your property as you asked.
Okay.
So do you have that list of chemicals that you can read into the microphone that you're standing at?
Oh, read it, yes.
Yes, please, thank you.
I'm just gonna grab my phone.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, just watch these doing that, this is discretionary, just so we know.
Oh, I'm fully aware.
Yeah, okay.
I can, we can move, so as a commission, we can, we can recommend a, a, recommend to council to deny this zoning request. We can recommend to reduce the zoning request to industrial one. We can recommend it to industrial two as requested. Or we could postpone, so just wanna let you know the lay of the land here of where this is, of, of where we are in the business item of this right now.
Sure. So we have seventy-six chemicals listed on the list.
Okay.
I'm not going to read all of those, but I, I can read it to you what's considered as hazardous.
Thank you.
I don't know what each of the letters stand for, so I'll just read out the letters. So the first one is LCO two, second one is N two O, third one is SI two H six, fourth is fifteen percent of PH three H two, number five is S I C I four, number six is ten percent of GE H four dash H two, seven is C four F eight, number eight is CH two F two, number nine is C three H six. So those are what's considered
Hazardous.
Hazardous, exactly.
These would be largely be, the intent is to store these at this facility and transport these to your client. Most likely, the Samsung plants at either in Austin.
in Austin or in Taylor, as we're kind of at the apex of that backward L. Is that correct?
Yes, so they will be importing the gas from South Korea, where the clients are from, and they'll be storing the gas in gas cylinders. So there is not going to be any of taking the gas out of the cylinders or what. And then they're bringing the cylinders to supplying it to Samsung, where they'll be making semiconductors with those gases.
So here's what I recommend. We just like wrote those down in Google. Like, we don't have enough time to do the research that we need to make an informed decision, is my opinion. And so I think postponing would make the most sense so that we can do our due diligence, look at these chemicals, look at what they mean. You know, get the letter from Michael with the list so that we can have time to do some more research.
Just for the record, you sent us the letter of intent on August sixth of twenty-twenty-four. That was more than seven months ago. The list per Michael Burrell was provided to EMS yesterday. Is that correct, or ESD twelve?
No, they had reviewed it previously.
You had it yesterday.
This was sent some time ago, but my thought process is
Okay.
no one would understand what the actual chemicals were, so to provide the.
Welcome to the new commission. We are not making decisions based off of just platitudes being made here at the commission. I'm sorry, I just, I don't feel comfortable making that decision that's going to have decades of effects on our community, whether, and I, I, I understand, once you leave, whatever happens, happens, but I make sure that I don't have a, a plume of smoke happening behind me as I leave a community. I wanna make sure that the community I'm in is better when I leave it than when I got here. And so I have concerns about that, and I, I wanna make sure, is this going, I, I'm, Mr. Mr. Jones, does us asking for a month to review this list impact anything on the other elements of this that you're working on as far as possibly halting this process? I know you've been working on this since twenty-twenty-three. Well, she's not gonna be constructing anything but agricultural at this point.
I don't know exactly the construction plans that Wannick has in, in place right now. We're trying to do everything that we can to get them annexed and get them zoned and get them prepared for their construction. Do you know, do you know further about their construction plans if a month will impact their construction timeline? Well, she said most likely, but they've been on a, a pretty quick timeline to try to get construction started out there ever since we, we, we have had some delays in trying to get utilities to them. We've had quite a few delays in trying to get them annexed. We've had about three months trying to get them annexed
Yeah.
because they were not contiguous to the city. We've actually had to buy property in between the annexed properties and their tract to try to get them annexed because they weren't contiguous before. So we've been trying everything we can to get them to, to be annexed, and now we've gotten the annexation, and so we're to that point. You know, to, to your questions about chemicals, I know they are gonna have to go through fire control. They're gonna have to, you know, do everything that, that Travis County ESD twelve requires of them for, you know, the, the mitigation of any types of problems or anything out there. They're not going to be storing, from what I understand, anything that's not being stored around us anyway because we have a couple of businesses just over to the east of them that, that, that have, that currently are vendors of the current chip plants, manufacturers, and such in the area already. So I don't think there's any type of materials that are out of the ordinary or anything that aren't already in close to the city of Maynor, maybe in the ETJ, but close to the city of Maynor right now. So, you know, to the extent that we can push the project forward, you know, that's, that's what I'm all about in economic development, so I'm, I'm here to help out where I can.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And, and I guess for the record, too, I, I do agree with Commissioner Stetson. You know, when we, when we get on this commission, we're here for the community and, and the, the work with Mr. Scott on, on stuff to make sure it gets passed. But I do want the safety for my, for my community. Commissioners, do we have anything else? Thank you, Miss.
So how many employees?
Oh, sorry. You can come back in.
How many employees?
That's correct.
I'm not sure exactly at this moment, but at this facility, right? Correct?
Yes.
There's probably gonna be around, not exactly sure, but there's gonna be a, probably around a hundred.
Thanks.
May I also add a couple of things?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just wanna add, confirm that we are going to abide with the code of Fire Department in the city of Maynor. We have been communicating with the Fire Department bill post, and we have been actively communicating with the Fire Consultants, the Fire Department ESD twelve, to be specific. And to add to the benefits of the city of Maynor, we are also developing the road beneath ours, which is going to benefit your future plan overall. So I think if we get to develop our site the faster, we will be able to connect to the road that's getting developed adjacent to our property. So we will definitely make sure that we follow the guidelines and the Fire Department's. And once we, as I've provided the list, I can also share the list, the gas list with you guys, but we can assure you that there should be no concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have anything else?
I would be interested in entertaining a motion to zone at I N one, which is the same zoning as the nearest zone industrial use. And under the understanding is that was connected by annexation or purchase of property to annex. So since that, I one, I mean, not I one, but I N one is existing there already and is on a lower zoning level. I would entertain a motion to zone this property, I N one.
Does I N one, Mr. Burrell, allow for the proposed uses to continue? Or does it, are there, is I, I N two only going to allow that? I'm trying to figure out which, which use we're talking about here, specific to this application or LOI.
It may be beneficial for Irene to detail what exactly, aside from chip lab and cleaning, is going on here.
From my understanding, that if there is any hazardous materials, even if of storing, we still have to go with I N two because I N one doesn't allow any of the hazardous materials to be stored.
So the question is, what is the actual intent of this facility? Not the chemicals used, but what is being done, what is?
What is the permanent use, or what is the use that's planned here?
So in the plan drawings, we, there are going to be offices, and there's going to be employees from Korea and that Wannick hires. And there are going to be, again, supplying to Samsung for the semiconductors, like electronics, telephones that we use. And those people are going to allow and help them support the supply of.
Mr. Scott, you have something?
Yeah, one, one of the things that you don't see at this facility that you will see at the other gas and, at gas and material storage facilities in Maynor Commercial Park is you don't see a lot of outdoor storage, because they have hazardous materials in plain view, outdoor, you know, just behind a fence. And these are contained, and they're inside, and they're, they're, they're well secured. So you're not gonna have a lot of outdoor storage of, of cylinders and things like that seen from the street. And it's, it's a much safer atmosphere.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. I do have a question for Ms. Irene. I noticed that Commissioner, the Chair asked you how many employees, and you said about a hundred, and then you just stated that, that you're gonna have people come in and be employees. So does that mean we won't be able to hire people that are already here in this community?
Oh, no, for sure there will be. I just said around a hundred, based on how many offices and how big the site is. And they're definitely going to hire people from the states and around Texas for Maynor.
And they're actually planning on paying them better than a lot of the people who are making right here right now, so that'll be a good thing.
This, this building that's in the exhibit, that's in phase one. And then we have multiple buildings that are being phased two and phase three. And the agenda item here is for the entire property that includes all three phases. That's correct? And so as a part of phase two and phase three, what would be the uses of those facilities?
The, I've talked to Wannick management, and they're planning on potentially bringing other sister companies. Wannick has thirteen different sister companies. And so they're talking about bringing some of their other sister organizations here. We don't know which ones yet. Wannick QNC was one of them. We didn't really care for Wannick QNC because they're a heavy industrial user of water and wastewater. And so they've located to another municipality. We were kinda glad of that. But they have some other sister companies that we would like to see here, and so we're talking to Wannick Management and Chris McGrath especially about that. And so we'd hope to see them. They are talking about looking at more property here as well to purchase. So we're, we're hopeful that, you know, this project will go well, and they'll buy additional property here and, and do more development.
And so what's your question for those phases?
Well, we've been told that after this project, which is scheduled to start late twenty-five or early twenty-six, depending on Samsung was pushed back a year, and so their plans have been pushed back a little bit. But we've been told that another year, maybe twenty-twenty-seven, they might bring those other sister companies on. And it might be as much as a hundred million dollars in, in capital investment. Where this is a forty-six million dollar plant, they might do as much as a hundred million, were the numbers that were thrown out at the time.
Okay, and you, you going about this in a design build? Design build? Okay, so I'm not worried about this schedule then, if that's the case, so.
I would also like to add, to answer your question, the phase two and three won't be regarding the additional gas storage, but it'll be, it'll open up more opportunities for research, engineers, and it'll be more offices, and that's going to be more opportunities for the people in the states as well.
I just, I just read an article today that said that Samsung was planning now to be open end of twenty-twenty-six. So which was news to me, because they had said that they might not be open till twenty-twenty-seven, but I just read that they'd pushed that up. So, you know, the, this company needs to be supplying Samsung when it's ready to open. So they'll be cleaning chips as soon as they're open, so they'll be pushing to try to be open about that time as well.
That's perfect then, so I'm sure we're gonna get all the information that we requested in due time then.
So I wanna make sure I understand, you are saying no less, you, you can't do anything with the lesser zoning than I N two? Like, it's that or nothing. You can't do your plans. That's what you're saying?
Is that right?
In, in terms of the chemical storage, the I N two would be necessary.
Alright, Commissioners, I have any more questions?
I do have one more question. So you said that like the wages would be higher than the average. Do you have like an average wage range that you could share?
They told me they were in the seventies.
Seventy K a year, average, would be the salary for.
Alright, Commissioners, anything else? Alright, thank you, Mrs. Scott. Thank you, Irene. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm leaning towards postponing because we don't have the list of chemical, time to research the chemicals. That would be the due diligence.
So I have a question. Commissioner Myers made a motion, is that correct?
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, alright. Sorry about that, Commissioner Leonard. What you got, Commissioner Leonard?
Yeah, I would move to postpone for a month so that we can do the research on the chemicals and make sure that everything is clean, you know, clear, and we can communicate. Hopefully, they could communicate with their neighbors that express concerns, and they can work through that while we do our due diligence on our side, and then can come back next month and provide an informed decision. So I would move to postpone one month.
I second that postponement to the, to the April meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes.
I have a motion by Commissioner Leonard to postpone regular agenda item number four. I have a second by Commissioner Stetson.
I also, I'm sorry.
Questioning on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes. So just wanna ensure what documentation that we're asking for, to be clear, delivered to us?
I would like to make an amendment to Commissioner Leonard's motion that I just seconded, if that's possible, to see if we could either, A, receive assurance from ESD twelve leadership of the, the, of the, the compliance and the, and the requirements of state and the ESD twelve to make sure that this store, that this operation will be safe and not harm the adjacent properties. That would provide me assurance, because I believe that would be the expert knowledge that we would need. I don't believe that we have. Tell me if, okay, city attorney, tell me what you wanna provide as.
Can you just please summarize the mo, the amendment to the motion?
My amendment to the motion is to postpone until the April Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to allow time for ESD twelve leadership to provide us a letter explaining, explaining their, their review of the chemical list and their, their, a summary of their, their recommendation in, in relation to the chemical list provided by the applicant.
Do, do, do you want the list of chemicals on? I, I would like the list of them.
The list of chemicals I expect to be provided by city staff. As we stated, they already have that. So that's an expectation of, of city staff for the next agenda. So is that two amendments? So just those two items. So yes, a, a full chemical list, especially with highlighting hazardous chemicals proposed, and a letter of review from the ESD twelve leadership. Do you accept that motion, or do you accept that amendment?
Do I second the amendment?
You accept it as friendly, or you?
I accept the amendment.
Thank you.
Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Leonard, a second by, I mean, a motion by Commissioner Stetson and a second by Commissioner.
An amendment, yeah. She's, she's incorporated.
Okay, she just.
It's an amended motion.
Alright, so all in favor, raise your hand? Oppose? Motion passes three to one. Oh, I'm sorry, four to one. Alright, moving on. Regular agenda item number five. Regular agenda item, consideration and discussion and possible action on a subdivision for Maynor Commons Northeast Commercial being nineteen lots on thirty-one point eight-eight-nine acres, more or less, and being located at the northeast corner of the intersection of US Highway two ninety and FM nine seventy-three, Maynor, Texas. Mr. Staff?
Yes, so to answer the questions previously posed in a public hearing. Pardon me if I'm speaking too close to the mic and I'll be heard clearly. So as for a drainage study with any development that goes on, a drainage study is required. You have to show your existing conditions, your proposed drainage, your grading. You have to essentially show that what you're proposing does not cause additional issue. Now, if there is a current issue of water pooling, I cannot speak for the developer, but I can say in my past experience, they also don't want water pooling on their roadways and property, so that's typically addressed. And as for what businesses are going in. And as for what businesses are going in, this is very preliminary, quite literally preliminary plat, one of the first steps in the development process. We just wouldn't be able to know who's going in there until we get closer to site plan. This is the commercial development, so it'll be stores, shops.
Similar to what you see across the street currently and coming up. Uh, it's, it's, I, I think I could speak for you, it's zone, we zoned it, or we recommended zoning for C one, so it's light commercial. Thank you.
Alright, we have any more questions, Commissioners?
This is a nondiscretionary item.
Alright, here we goes.
I recommend approval of item five.
We got a motion by Commissioners Stetson to have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meyer, all in favor? Oppose. Moving on, consideration, discussion and possible action on. On the met, detention waiver request for Boyce Street Mixed Use Development. Located at one oh one, one oh four, one oh seven and one oh eight West Boyce Street, Maynor, Texas. Mr. Staff.
Yes, so this actually received engineer approval yesterday, so too late to actually include in the agenda, but. It has been determined by our engineers that what they are proposing does not. Increase flows in a detriment to the property or those around it, and we do have Polly here for further questions, because she can explain that much better than I can.
So do we even have to vote on it since?
This is discretionary.
Um, well, if it's.
This was originally posted for, this is the one that we postponed last month because it was a being a conditional approval. And I believe it's posted as a conditional approval.
It was postponed, I'm sorry, it was withdrawn from the agenda last month.
Polly Gray, G B A city engineer, um, yes, uh, the last meeting, it was worded incorrectly and it said a drainage waiver. Which basically meant they didn't have to do any drainage, so this is just a detention waiver, so what this does is. We look at their proposed drainage, they provide all these calculations, we looked at it, we reviewed it. And they proved to us that, uh, basically a detention pond's not required for the site. That their flows leaving the site, the way they're designing it and controlling it, it's not gonna increase the flows off their site. Um, so when the flows get down to Old Highway twenty from their site, it increases the depth less than an inch of water. And so we went back and forth, we reviewed it three times, um, somebody in G B A's drainage department who is retired from the city of Austin. Who did drainage reviews, reviewed it very thoroughly, he, you know, and he was like. Um, it, it's good to go, um, it, it took a while to get the information we wanted. And, but, like I said, we've taken a look at it and whether proposing will work. So all this is, is just to prove that they don't have to construct a detention pond, they will still have to cons, you know, construct drainage to, you know, convey the drainage. Off their site and whatnot, but this is just saying they don't have to construct a pond.
Ms. Gray, um, you said it, it's within it, or it's less than an inch, is an inch the threshold? For this, or is, I guess this was within the reasonable limits?
It's within reasonable limits, um, you can go higher um, with that, um. Basically, because it, we looked at it because it's gonna cross Old Highway twenty through culverts and stuff, and we wanna make sure. And so basically what he said, yeah, it's not gonna overtop the road, and that's really, and per city of Austin Drainage Criteria Manual. Um, you can't actually have water across the road in storm events, that is allowed. We tried to avoid that because I don't wanna drive through water, citizens. But, but that's what we look at, and so basically that's what we're looking at and make sure that all the water being conveyed would not cause any issues right there. Um, you know, because it's gonna, their drainage is just gonna go up Caldwell and then cross over, you know, under um. Parsons, and there's existing culverts, so we may then prove that what they're proposing, it's not gonna like. Cause any issues with the existing structure, nothing needs to be updated or anything, but the water should, you know, should remain. In the, in the city storm sewer system.
Is this the three-story building that's being built?
No, it, it's next door to that one.
Next door to, okay.
Yes, yes.
I have a question, um. On the material provided shows about six city blocks worth of drainage that contributes. Uh, to this point, and my question is, is if those. Six city blocks are developed at the same intensity that this one is being developed at. Is the culvert or the drainage structures on Caldwell Street gonna be enough to handle that?
Well, we only look at that for a case-by-case basis, so we just looked at what their proposal and construct. And based on what the information they provided, it would work, if somebody comes in further up or somewhere else, then they'll have to do the same sort of. Study and they may be required to upgrade it, but with the flows coming off this site, at this point they're not. We can't make them look at, you know, because we don't know. A, a lot of these are basically sim, single-family lots being combined to do commercial sites. Um, I can say that the city is in the process of, um. We're in negotiations with them to do a, a drainage study for Old Town Maynor, um, to see, um. What, what we can do to help with the issues, because it's, it's gonna be a constant issue, because. The city is not laid out for what people wanna construct now, which is the commercial and stuff, because you're taking single-family lots. And, you know, you're increasing it, so, um, except for this one, the requirement was just to look and see. Um, they did calculations showing what was upstream, but it was based on what's there now, we can't say, oh, well, design this if they. Put in a three-story building, we can't do that because we don't know, it could always stay a house. So they're only required to look at how their project would affect the flows. Like I said, if somebody else comes in, then they may be required to make some modifications, but at this point. What they're proposing to do doesn't necessitate doing any upgrades to the city system, other than what they're gonna install with their project.
Fair, I can vouch for that, thirty-five plus years ago. We knew how much rain we got, because if the creek was almost overflowing, we knew how much rain Maynor had, because it flew, it only went. That way, so, yeah, we knew, but, yeah. Alright, Commissioners, do we have any more questions?
I had one more question.
Yes, sir.
Are the drainage structures downstream, uh, currently handling what's flowing through them now?
Yes. That, those drainage truck, especially along Caldwell and that area where they're draining to, that's, um, some new construction that the city did. It's been a while, but, but the city did improve that, because there were issues along Caldwell and Bass drop, so there was a drainage. Um, so, yeah, I can bays it now, um, and actually, I, I, I think it works pretty well, so. But, I can, if y'all drive around and see issues, let Public Works know. And then, like I said, then they pass it along to us and we will take a look at it, so, but, yeah.
I have a question, so. We want to be a forward-thinking city that thinks ahead, right, and this, this is. Discretionary item, so, you know, we are thinking ahead, right? We know what the comprehensive plan says this area is gonna grow to be. And wouldn't we want to not be in a reactive position? But to instead take a proactive position and request that, just because. We are not at maximum capacity now, that this company gets a pass. Shouldn't we take, adopt a mindset of being more proactive and, you know, knowing that, okay. We are going to need this at some point, we are, right, like you said, the, the, it's not built. For what the comprehensive plan wants it to be, so we're gonna have to take actions, should we take them? Little over time, instead of getting to where it's so bad and then we're reacting, kinda like what's happening with the roads.
Um, that's really above, kind of above my pay grade for that, that would be, I mean, you're talking, um. Ordinance modifications and other stuff, because they followed the steps required by city ordinances in the city of Austin Drainage Criteria Manual. Which is what Maynor follows, so we, you know, you, you can't impose something like that on somebody at this point. It's, it's just, it's, it's not, you know, you, you can't do it.
It's moving the goalposts essentially.
Is it legally allowed?
I don't know.
Veronica Ribeiro, Assistant City Attorney, um, Commissioner, are you asking, is it legally allowed for y'all to? Be proactive instead of reactive?
Asking, is it legally allowed for us to not approve this detention waiver request? And have them do detention work?
So again, one of the things that is required is that engineering and P N C approve. You are hearing from engineering saying that they are approving, so. Then you would need to state your reason on why you are not approving, because they will appeal. And so we will need, we would need a reason why, and it can't be because it's. For fu, future things, so.
So they would have a case to try to fight it in court, if we.
It goes to the Board of Adjustment.
If I may add, we.
And others. Yeah, it goes where?
The city is currently working on updating our downtown drainage master plan, so we are looking to the future for how these flows can be properly conveyed. To the areas that they're intended to go, because we recognize, even without all of the new development coming in. There are drainage issues that currently exist before that comes in, so we are actively looking at that to address it. That's, that's the forward-thinking portion.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Alright, Commissioners, we have anything else, any questions? Alright, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve this, uh, agenda item.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meyer to approve it, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioners Stetson, all in favor, raise your hand. Oppose, motion passes. Moving on to regular agenda item, consider discussion and possible action on. Coordinating sign plans for the Platinum nine seventy-three gas station being located at one three eight zero one. Nine F M nine seventy-three, Maynor, Texas, Commissioners, the applicant is here. Um, does not wish to speak, but will answer questions if needed.
Uh, yes, this is for the Platinum nine seventy-three gas station currently under construction along nine seventy-three going north. Uh, this coordinated sign plan, I've worked with the applicant pretty closely on it, we've come to the understanding that. Larger signage is not necessarily the answer, so he has done his best to bring it in general compliance with the C two guidelines, just additional signage. Because the site operates out of three buildings with multiple tenants, the market eatery building that you see on there, he does have. The proposed signage already on display, for the other two buildings, tenants have not been decided, yes, this is just general placeholders with the size allowances. I will also state that a development agreement has already been completed for their digital fuel price sign, it's standard city practice to have. That development agreement, it essentially states that they will stay in compliance with our outdoor lighting code. There will be a secondary sign along Suncrest, but that will not be a thirty-foot sign, that'll be a twenty-five-foot monument. As per allowed by code with coordinated sign plans, and that's something that we've already spoken to and addressed.
When you say a twenty-five-foot monument, you mean un, eliminated or not illuminated?
Those can be eliminated, but it won't be a digital fuel price sign, it'll be more of an advertisement for the other.
Okay.
Tenants.
It's a back gate, yeah. Um, I wanted to confirm, um, I, I, I saw on buildings one, so buildings one and two. Or buildings two and three are, are kind of separated, that you have a number of signs, you have essentially a hundred ninety-two square feet of. Of the group, of group A signs, and then two hundred fifty-two square feet for a total of four forty-four, that's within the four hundred fifty square feet. For those two buildings, so it's allowed based on the square footage, and then, and then building, building one, which as you mentioned. Um, already has a signage designed, is two hundred twelfth, two, two hundred ten square feet, so that's exactly within the signage. Square footage allowed under code, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, thank you. I have no other questions.
Commissioners, any Commissioners have any other questions? Alright, do I have a motion for regular agenda item number seven?
I move to approve agenda item number seven.
I have a motion by Commissioner Leonard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Chavis, all in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose, motion passes. I have, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, Planning and Zoning.
So moved.
At seven forty-two, do I have a second?
Like to make a motion that we adjourn?
I have a motion by Commissioner Myers, do I have a second?
Second.
Mentioned by, second by Commissioner Stetson, all in favor? Oppose.